Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. If you would please. Commissioner. Commissioner Fiani will recite a prayer.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. In honor of today being September 11th, Patriot Day, I would like to recite the prayer that was said by Pope Benedict back at Ground Zero. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Oh God of love, compassion, and healing, look on us, people of many different faiths and traditions, who gather today at this site, the scene of incredible violence and pain. We ask you, in your goodness, to give eternal light and peace to all who have died here. The heroic first responders are firefighters, police officers, emergency service workers, and port authority personnel, along with all the innocent men and women who were victims of this tragedy simply because their work or service brought them here on September 11th, 2001. We ask you, in your compassion, to bring healing to those who, because of their presence here that day, suffer from injuries and illness. Heal too the pain of still grieving families and all who lost loved ones in this tragedy. Give them strength to continue their lives with courage and hope. We are mindful as well of those who suffered death, injury, and loss on the same day at the Pentagon and in Pennsylvania. Our hearts are one with theirs as our prayer embraces their pain and suffering. Comfort and console us, strengthen us in hope, and give us the wisdom and courage to work tirelessly for a world where true peace and love reign among nations in the hearts of all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. You'll rise, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved, Drick.
Second, Deaton.
Moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we have an agenda. Under correspondence, we have resolutions from Tuscola County. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to accept and place on file the correspondence.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments on the correspondence? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. We'll now go to call to the public. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we'll start with Jason Ringette, Brighton Township, followed by Randy Clausen.
Hello, Board of Commissioners. In April 2021, the state emergency mandate stopped in Michigan. I'm curious why the Livingston County Sheriff's Office and Livingston County Prosecutor's Office did not investigate the Livingston County Health Department giving out mandates, guidance, and recommendations to Livingston County superintendents and board members who forced kids to wear face masks and healthy quarantines on their schoolchildren to stay home and who were not even sick for the school year 212022, which violates children's U.S. constitutional rights, violating their rights under the First, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments and the Guarantee Clause in the federal statutes, the regulations, civil rights, state laws, federal laws, and their due process to public education, forcing illegal mandates and healthy quarantines in Livingston County schools. How much further has Livingston County schoolkids fallen behind in education due to the reckless, illegal, healthy quarantines and mask mandates? With no peer-reviewed, replicated scientific studies to back up their reckless actions to show that masks and healthy quarantines work, pushing our children to wear masks that has caused some of the kids suffering depression, isolation, physical, psychological, sociological harm to our children, impose pain, suffering, humiliation on students, inhibit their speech, damage to their health, and some kids starve because there are only two meals Monday through Friday was going meals given at school. All these people who got COVID, drawn COVID vaccines, have deadly spike proteins. People who took the COVID vaccines were the ones shedding and spreading the deadly spike proteins, infecting other people with the COVID virus. COVID vaccines have caused sudden deaths within the first 30 days, irreversible side effects of health syndromes, cardiac arrest, major blood clots, people dying because of the deadly spike proteins, hospital protocols, or what killed COVID patients. It wasn't COVID. Giving them remdesivir that shuts down their kidneys, drowning them with IV fluids because their kidneys no longer work, sedating them, giving them a low-calorie diet so they will not fight to stay alive, intubating people which damaged their lungs is what actually killed people. People denied ivermectin HCQ because it actually was the cure. Because ivermectin HCQ, you could not declare a state of emergency before election fraud. Both of these drugs are very effective therapeutics. This is why they deny it so heavily. Because the deep state players want to cheat again, like they did in the 2020-22 elections, using the exact same playbook, pushing new COVID variant hysteria and making people afraid, using the same scare tactics so they can push for more mail-in ballots, early voting, drop boxes, and still the 2024 president's election. They want people to take the booster again because pharmaceutical companies are losing money. They want to make money. They want the population. They want people sick. They want more lockdowns and destroy our economy. Remember when they want people six feet apart, wear a mask, take COVID test report if you come in contact. Doing all these things didn't work. None of these things were peer-reviewed after the last lockdowns, COVID hysteria. They did peer-reviewed studies that show all these things did not work. It was all made up BS. Anyone wanting kids masked up for the 23-24 school year, it's child abuse and they need be criminally prosecuted. And I sent you all this for your request on September 5th, how the Health Department has no proof that masks work. All of you got my email, September 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Randy Clausen from Howell, followed by Susan Nichols.
You have three minutes. Hello.
During this three-minute talk, I am grateful for this being a public place that where the public can say, have an opportunity to say what's on their mind. There are issues that we see as important. You are appreciated for your service to Livingston County. We are in this together, and all of us are working to make choices that endeavor to improve the life in Livingston County for everyone. You know that during previous calls to the public, my topic was related to public transportation for the disadvantaged, the disability community, and especially those who are dependent on transit. Thank you for listening graciously and not rolling your eyes because probably inside your conversation, you were saying, oh, no, here she comes again. Get ready for a pitch for better public transportation. But now, some of you are old enough to remember a famous news personality that often said, now, the rest of the story. So now, the rest of my story. You start your meeting with a call to God, an opening prayer. I start my day with a call to God. I name it my centering prayer. Daily, we step forth into holy ground and into mystery, above and beyond what we can think or imagine. Part of a prayer that St. Paul wrote is included in the Bible. Now to Him who is able to do immensely more than we ask or imagine according to His power that is at work within us. To Him be the glory in the church, in Christ Jesus, throughout all generations, forever and ever. Amen. I can think and imagine a better bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County than the ones in Roshina County. I can think and imagine a better bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County than the bus system in England County. I can think and imagine a better bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County than in Oakland County. I can think and imagine a better bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County than in Genesee County. I can think and imagine a better bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County than in Chiawassee County. God wants a better, adequate bus system for the disadvantaged in Livingston County. God is working through your prayers and actions at each of these commissioner meetings to accomplish His intent. Jesus, in His famous Sermon on the Mount, said it this way. Truly, I tell you, whatever you did not do for the, one of the least of these, you did not do for me. I'm thinking and imagining a transformation of perspective in each of your hearts so that all of your votes will be to create an adequate bus system in Livingston County. May it be so.
Susan Nichols, Genoa Township, followed by Janine Iyer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing us to talk. Thank you for that prayer, Commissioner Fiani, especially on this day. Thank you. I don't get to come here very often because there's other meetings on Monday night, so I'm glad to be here tonight. I want to first thank you for passing the emerging threats resolution. I know that you put a lot of time and effort into that, so we really appreciate that. I understand up for discussion tonight is the medical freedom resolution. I would like to show my support, but as I was reading tonight, so I have to change a little bit. As it's up for discussion, I think it's a great idea. We all have experienced what the last pandemic did in this community, and I have no problem with anyone who chooses to wear a mask or to get a vaccine. That's a personal choice, and that's called freedom. So I really appreciate you putting this forth. And as it's up for discussion, I think, I'm sure there's a reason there's a 28-day calendar resolution, but then it goes on to say authorize a continuation of emergency measures limited to month-by-month basis. I don't know, maybe that has to be in there. It'd be nice if we didn't have any of those mandates. But again, I support the resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janine Iyer, Genoa Township, followed by, sorry, this is a little difficult to read. It's either Devon or Dawn Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your sacrificial service to our county and your faithful representation of your constituents. I also want to thank you for your unanimous passing of the amendment to the emergency threats resolution two weeks ago. Recall that this amendment required that none of the funds authorized by this resolution could be used to vaccinate a minor without the consent and presence of a parent, institute vaccine or mask mandates, institute vaccine passports, implement or enable healthy student quarantines, or provide minors with gender-altering or elective abortion services. While this amendment has these excellent provisions, it only applied to the funds authorized by this emerging threats resolution, approximately $718,000, which is a small fraction of the operating cost of the Livingston County Health Department. If you remember the many public comments about this amendment two weeks ago, residents of Livingston were resoundingly in favor of these provisions. Residents like myself would like to see these guardrails applied to every dollar utilized and every activity performed by the Livingston County Health Department. Recently, schools and hospitals in other states have reinstituted mask mandates due to a supposed uptick of a new COVID variant. Now is a great time for Livingston County to also take a stand for its residents in regard to health decision rights. Therefore, I support the health freedom resolution that Commissioner Deaton has brought up for discussion today. Finally, I want to add that our U.S. Constitution provides for the separation of powers and checks and balances. We saw in October of 2020 that sometimes our state constitution violates this separation of powers, and the governor's 1945 emergency power section of the Michigan Constitution was struck down as unconstitutional because the powers did not have a deadline or check from another branch. The more recent 1976 governor's emergency power section of the Michigan Constitution had the deadline of 28 days when another branch of government, namely the legislature, provided the check and balance of decisions on emergencies and the emergency measures pronounced by the governor, who is the head of the executive branch. In a similar manner, as the unconstitutional 1945 Emergency Powers Act of the Governor's Section, the indefinite emergency powers of state and local health officers does not currently have a deadline. There is no check and balance currently on health officers, which are a part of the executive branch. Therefore, the health freedom resolution under discussion affords a U.S. constitutional check and balance of power that protects we, the people. Supporting this resolution would be upholding the U.S. Constitution, the supreme law of the land. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is it Devon?
It's Dawn.
Dawn, okay. Dawn Smith, Brighton Township, followed by Madeline Thomas.
All right, I think you guys might remember me from last time when I talked about the resolution that Nick Fiani did. I appreciate you guys passing that. So obviously, I'm here to talk about the health freedom resolution as well. I want to let everyone know that the violation of the Constitution that happened during the COVID pandemic didn't just apply to that. It also violated the ethics of nurses and doctors. And the nursing code of ethics has four major portions, one of them being beneficence. That means you have to try to help the patient. We did not do that to the best of our ability. We, things that could have been tried to help patients were outlawed or ridiculed. Outpatient treatment, the patients were just told to go home and then come back when they couldn't breathe. The first two weeks when I was in the hospital when it started, I kind of thought I was going to die because I'm in the over-50 age bracket, and I was really scared. And then one day, I was sitting on the unit, and I looked around, and I noticed that all the patients were morbidly obese that were in the ICU. Why weren't we not talking about diet and exercise at the beginning? We could have saved tons of people. I was angry. I was talking about it, and no one wanted to hear about it. What is a second ethical rule is justice, treats patients equally and fairly. Patients were not given transplants because they were not vaccinated, and people without masks were not allowed entry to different places. And still now, some doctor's offices, you can't get in if you don't have a mask on. Another of the ethical rules of nursing is non-maleficence. That means we have to, you know, first do no harm, like the doctors do. We pushed these vaccines, and they were called safe and effective, and we ignored any side effects that the patients had. One patient that was admitted to my unit was a 35-year-old female who was admitted for myocarditis. No one filled out a VAERS report. No one even thought about it. People do not realize that these vaccines have side effects. As I mentioned last time, I'm one of the people that is reading the Pfizer documents that were supposed to be sealed for 75 years. I want to let you know that any side effect, that what is not a normal vaccine side effect that you would see in other vaccines, like fever, muscle aches, headache, anything else that was in those documents for those patients was marked as not related to the vaccine. Heart attacks, strokes, miscarriage, these are not made up things. These were real people that this happened to, so they're hiding this information. We were getting more and more documents each month because the court ordered that they have to release them. What made me the most angry is the most strong rule of nursing that is supposed to supersede all other ethical rules is autonomy. Everything should always be the patient's choice. I had to argue with doctors in the past when they wanted to push a treatment on a patient, like a cancer treatment, if the patient didn't want it. It can only be what the patient wants. So we can't let the fear of some people supersede and take away the freedom of all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madeline Thomas, Brighton Township, followed by Michelle Herbert.
Good evening, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate the fact that you guys approved the last health resolution that was submitted. I'm here to support this additional resolution that's being submitted today. We're not doing this again. This last three years has been a freaking nightmare, and none of the measures, none of them, helped anybody. In fact, I know people who were killed in the Livingston County St. Joe's Hospital. Another person had her kidneys damaged over there. I can't have, I feel like I'm living in a nightmare. None of these measures worked. They're all against our constitutional rights. We have a right to decide if we want to take something or put on a mask or whatever. And everybody was in a panic about something that had a point. The first one, the worst COVID, number one, whatever you call it. They had a .03 mortality rate. We've got flu that has more mortality rates than that. We're not doing this again. I appreciate your patience listening to me. Have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michelle Herbert, Genoa Township, followed by Janine Deaton.
Good evening, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Hello. Hi, my name is Michelle Herbert, Genoa Township, and I'm a frequent attendee. Again, former retired nurse, and I just feel compelled to speak about this. I appreciate all the time and effort you guys put into this. I can't imagine doing your job. However, personally, you know, our government is so screwed up, I mean, so screwed up. It's supposed to be the people that drive things, not the government that drive the people. I mean, we're so far off course from what we're supposed to be doing, it's just not even funny. But this whole health thing is just, I can't even believe we sit here and talk about this. I don't care who you guys are. You're going to tell me to wear a mask. I'm not going to listen to you. So if I don't want to wear one, I'll wear one. If I don't want to wear one, I'm not going to wear one. I don't need somebody to tell me how to take care of myself, when I can go out, when I have to stay in, any of those things. We have just rights that are just supposed to be self-evident, you know? And I just think we just better rein this in. And, you know, I'm just going to say right out, I'm not going to comply. So I support your resolution, and I appreciate your time and efforts. The fact that we even have to have a conversation and have a resolution that says this stuff is just mind-boggling to me. But anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janine Deaton, Genoa Township, followed by Chuck Wright.
Hello, gentlemen. I am reading an article that was passed. Huntington Beach City Council votes to ban COVID-19 vaccine and mask mandates in the county. They banned for all future pandemics and any mandates for the future. They said that they made the declaration four nights ago. So they made a ban that they are not going to enforce anything because it is unconstitutional. In April of this year as well, Collier County, Florida, passed the same resolution. No mask or vaccine mandates shall be implied on any citizen. I'm hoping that you guys will follow suit. I appreciate this resolution you guys are trying to come up with, but the exception of that is the 28-day policy. Where have we ever became a citizen or a country to where we have the sick people have more rights than the healthy people? Why should we have to mask up and stay home because people are afraid? I don't want to live in fear. God says, no weapon formed against us shall prosper. It's our livelihoods at stake here, and if we mask up and live in fear, we're not going to succeed in life. I think that if we do not follow these mandates, then we are not giving in to the tyranny that's coming towards us. We need to pass this resolution with no time whatsoever, no 28 days and revisit later. We will not follow mask and vaccine mandates because it is unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township, followed by Marcia Sizmansky.
Chuck, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. I also want to thank Nick Fiani for passing the resolution, or the amendments to the resolution for the health care two weeks ago. Thank you. Actually, I'm opposed to this resolution that you're going to be discussing this evening. And the reason for that is two words. It's listed in here twice. Strongly recommended. That really isn't very strong. It's kind of a, please, would you be nice to us, Health Department? Or we're going to give you a strongly worded letter. I think you should work on the wording of that. And some words I'd like to see in place of strongly recommended, compel, dictate, enforce, instruct, impose, assert, declare, call for, demand, must make, requires, insist on, order, my favorite, direct that. I think the intent of the resolution is pretty solid. It's just a, please, would you be nice to us, and thank you letter, and that really doesn't hold much water. If you guys run a business, you've been in the military, you have a practice of your own, you've managed people, when you want something done, you tell them what you want done so they understand it. And when they understand it, they'll do what you want. Otherwise, they're insubordinate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marcia Sizmansky, Marion Township, followed by Sharon Stanton.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. And I'd want to thank you all too for your service and how you're representing your constituents. It's really appreciated. And in general, I also am supporting the new health freedom resolution. But, and I'm thinking of, as the information is coming out more and more about all the draconian measures taken during the COVID pandemic, the lockdowns, the masking, the vaccine mandates, et cetera, et cetera, it's becoming more and more evident that all these measures, at best, were ineffective, but so many of them were so harmful, and we will not know for decades the total harm that has been done. Obviously, the death, but also all the undetected health ramifications too, and mental health, et cetera, et cetera. So in general, I'm supporting the health freedom resolution. But I have to agree, I do have a problem with that 28-day approval and then renewal scenario because it gets us back into the same potential rat race and going along with things that are harmful and probably don't work. And then also the stronger language. It has to be where we're drawing a line in the sand. We have a constitution. People have their constitutional rights, which were trampled on and shredded, and we need to protect those rights more than anything else. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sharon Stanton, Marion Township, followed by Lisa Rosmanerwich from Hamburg.
I fully support the resolution for health freedom being proposed today. In supporting this resolution, I am also supporting the Constitution of the United States. When our local Livingston County Health Department attempts to impose or enforce mRNA shots, mask mandates, testing, or quarantining asymptomatic people, or mandating vaccine passports, they are flying in the face of our Constitution and our individual rights as United States citizens. Please vote in support of this resolution, and in doing so, support the Constitution of the United States and the people in this community that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lisa from Hamburg Township, followed by Tricia Fessler.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Unfortunately, I know two 40-something-year-old young men that have died in the last three weeks. One of them was my cousin that we buried today from a heart attack, vaccinated. Came to visit his mother in Michigan with five children and his wife. And it's just, it's a huge tragedy. it's a huge tragedy. I want to talk about technocracy and tyranny, because that is what is driving all of this. I talked last time about how OB gins are telling pregnant women that the vaccine is safe and effective for pregnant women. And I did some further research, and there's Dr. John Leek, Corey, Dr. Corey and Dr. Merrick have been looking at HHS reports, and they FOIA'd the money trail of the HHS, giving money to NGOs. There are fourteen hundred pages of documents, and fifty percent of them were redacted. HHS has paid millions to NGOs that oversaw OB gins, that they would stick to the HHS script of safe and effective for pregnant women. If they tell the truth, they have to give the money back, even if the doctors tried to give informed consent. That's a no-no. The American College of OB-GYNs doing some further work on their website, it's ACOG.org, there's a form on their portal. For sixteen billion dollars that they're giving to OB gins, to, this started in 2020, they, they had to code the patient as a COVID patient, even if they did not exist, even if the test was negative, in order to keep these numbers going. Some of the things that we know about, that happened to these, these women who have been vaccinated, their babies have been born with malformations, chromosomal malformations, newborns unable to breathe, and maternal deaths in childbirth were increased by forty percent. We have companies that are dictating policy in this country, and I'm sure you guys are aware of that. This is, I'm, so I'm, in one hundred percent of this, this health freedom mandate, but I do not think that there should be any health emergency that our health department can call for twenty-eight days for no days, because a pandemic, a health emergency does not trump the constitution. We still have our rights. And I just feel like we cannot trust these agencies. They're, they're not elected people. They don't represent any of us, and they have been proven to be traitors of the American people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tricia Fessler, Heartland Township, followed by Rob Rodriguez Pelazari.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Because I was here last time, I just talked about how I've had family members injured and harmed by these shots. So this has been a battle for a long time for me and very personal. So I thank you, Commissioner Deaton, for bringing this forward, and for all of you commissioners for hearing us tonight and bring this up for discussion. So I support the resolution, but I'm glad the others had noted the 28-day. And I'm glad also that somebody else mentioned this strongly recommend, because I both, I noticed both of those two. So I'm glad somebody else had mentioned that. But I am in support of it other than those two. I would like to see those changed a little bit. But we can't let this happen again. And I would imagine that all of us in this room would probably think the same. We can't, we can't let, because we have to uphold our constitution. We can't let our businesses suffer. We can't let people suffer harm and death. We just can't. So I would agree with that. We're a nurse, you know, many of us were already, we're not going to comply, but we want to work together as a community to just, you know, with these resolutions, they're, they're wonderful. So that would be my two cents on those two things. The other thing is, I would love to see a motion be brought forth so that a vote could be taking, taken on this tonight, if possible, and changing those two things. So thank you so much. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last card I have for the chambers is Rob Rodriguez Pelazari from Brighton.
Evening. Evening, gentlemen. I want to thank you guys again for standing up and holding the line. I can tell you, I'm so proud of you guys. This is incredible what you're doing today. Is it perfect? Probably not. Not many things are. But we have little things like pesky state law that we might have to contend with also, right? So there are some things that we have to possibly not put in this resolution, but it doesn't keep us from writing further resolutions, now does it? It really doesn't. This resolution is sound. I think you guys should vote on it today. I think we should send a message. And I think what we're really doing here is, as Livingston County, we are drawing a line in the sand. We are telling the rest of the state that you can't push past this point. We're not going to be naive and, and play like things happened last time. We're not going to be a sacrificial lamb. This is something that I'm so proud of you guys for being proactive and taking a step in looking at this. So I do hope that you pass the resolution, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Commissioner, I have Stephanie.
Hi, my name's Stephanie. I've been in the meetings before, and I won't talk too much about medical freedom. We all have them, and the, you know, US doesn't crack down on them the way you are acting like, but you've got your own choice. I will speak on public transportation, which you guys have severely underfunded. You severely underfunded that to the detriment of citizens that need it. And I'm, I'm standing there, I'm standing here with Mary Ann Lampkin, who I've read about in the paper, who was vilified for years, and I'm starting to see her side of things, the way county, this county treats people. And look at David Reeder, ready to release this man Floyd Jarvey, who's done a horrible crime years ago, that is, you know, we had to have our attorney general step in. So you guys need to look at the people you're letting out on the street to roam free. That has angered a great number of citizens. And I don't care what capacity the criminal has acted in, but it's unfortunate that this county does not crack down on criminals the way they should. Okay? And I'll get on board with this public transportation thing, because I've been one of the residents in severe need of transportation. I could have made a living well if I didn't have to pay car insurance and have to rely on transportation for many years. This is years ago. But it's a real need, and it will be a need as we age our population, and for many people for different reasons. I don't care what you, what the reason is. Many people choose not to drive, and it's a fundamental thing to have public transportation. The fact that you don't want to fund it is, speaks volumes to me about how much you care about your citizens. And I'll use my three minutes here too to say that you're focusing and targeting the LGBTQ community has no place in a modern society. Treating it like a mental illness is a thing of a hundred years ago, where you throw them in an asylum. That's what we used to do with people with autism. You guys want to do it to people who choose to be different, or not choose, but who are different organically. And it's, I find it outrageous. And I'm sorry, I'm angry about it, because it's sat with me for a while. It doesn't sit well. Whether I have a stake in it or not doesn't matter. You can't attack people for who they are. Some people are born into that condition. It's not a condition, actually. They're born that way, and you need to respect it. And you need to respect the right of public transportation. I'm sorry. This is not an altogether wealthy community when you treat your, the least of us like, like they're nothing and go on your political rants about the LGBTQ or, or librarians that Helsnerman does a metaphor of a cockroach. Are you kidding me? I saw that on tape. I've got a lot of things on tape that you people say. In LGBTQ, it's not a mental illness. Of, of course.
I have Cindy M.
Good evening.
Hi, Cindy Mcnevich from Hamburg Township. I just have to give kudos to the organization, organizing that people had done at a last-minute agenda item on this medical freedom. I just wish that you would just start governing and not spend so much time on things like this. Nothing's going to come of this. And if it does, medical freedom, freedom for people who want the vaccine is, is fine. Let the, let the health department do their job. This is a lot of money, and don't have strings attached to it. And also, let's get to, let's get some work done, like the transportation, expanding the transportation. Let's get some work done for people to make this county a better place to live instead of just dividing the people. We all really want the common goal of a nice place to live. This, there's not going to be a lockdown. There's not going to be mandates. Let's just be real. And the one commenter that said, most of the people that died were morbidly obese or have comorbidities, yeah, that did happen. But those lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I have Charlotte's iPhone.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I agree with the resolution, but I don't agree with a lot of things in it. One being the 28 days, which everyone is talking about. And I thank you guys for supporting it. Also, in the resolution, I don't know, this backseat-
Ma'am, can you tell us where you're from?
Oh, Charlotte Hammack from Howell, city of Howell. But anyhow, I do want to bring up two things. One's a, I, I was there the last time, and it was a Truth About COVID-19, a book from Robert F. Kennedy. There's also another book about a local resident of Michigan, Dr. Andrew Huff, The Truth About Wuhan. Those two books are a must-read for anybody to educate themselves. Also, I wanted to bring up the 1947 Neumanberg Code. Okay? It says, no experiment should be conducted where there is prior reason to believe that there are deaths or disability injuries will occur. Right? Also, jurisdiction and being overreached to, for, like, somebody to govern or to have authority over our constitutional right is absolutely a not. It is unconstitutional, and it's prior to positive law. Anyways, you cannot overstep jurisdiction. There's a limitation, and there's statutory limitations to constitution, right, power, privilege, or immunity. Also, verse COVID report the vaccine data. This is probably a little outdated now, because, I mean, there's a lot of myocarditis on young kids. Okay? Come on. I mean, it's crazy. It's like nine hundred eighty-five miscarriages, three hundred thirty, two hundred, three thousand, three hundred, and this is in '21, miscarriages, life-threatening people that had life-threatening issues to the vaccine, seven thousand eight hundred twenty-three. Disability, some people are on disability now because of the vaccines. Now, what needs to be stated with this COVID money, okay, and the mask, that is unsanitary, they do not work, read the box, go and get an N95 mask, mask where you paint stuff. It tells you, read the boxes, people. Two, there's also on the list on that vaccine, no information, no side effects. That is illegal. It goes into the Neumanberg Code of 1947. People have to know the side effects. And CDC and FDA just approved this new one. I hope it has a list of side effects and all the ingredients for when we, the people, decide to inject ourselves, because we're not going to be told to inject ourselves. There is no emergency with COVID. Number two, the number thing is, oh, hydrochloroquine.
Thank you.
You don't have any more, Commissioner?
Okay. That being the case, is there anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken and would like to get up and speak? So we'll, we'll move on to reports. Or we have already done reports? No, we haven't. We jumped ahead. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting dated August 28th, 2023. Chair will entertain a motion?
So move Helsnerman to-
Support.
Minutes. Support Deaton.
All right. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item on the agenda is tabled items from previous meetings. I don't believe there are any. Item 10 is reports. Are there any reports from members of the board? Yes, sir?
I have three short reports. The United Auto Workers has voted to authorize strikes at GM Ford and Stellantis, and the telling date is September 14. The UAW and the Teamsters want forty-six percent wage increase. They want traditional defined benefit pensions. They want a 32-hour work week.
This is going to affect Livingston County. Additionally, leading, leading economic indicators have fallen for sixteen straight months. There's a cost of living crisis. Parcel volumes are dropping by so much that freight pilots don't have job security anymore. People are running up credit card debt and defaulting on car loans. They're making, they're failing to make their payments. We're having a situation of rising financial pressure on consumers. Auto delinquencies have now surpassed pre-COVID levels. Sales of subsidized electric cars are off. There's a hundred and three-day supply of unsold electric vehicles, which is higher than any other automotive segment. Third report, I gave two speeches in the county saying that CBDCs were going to be hacked easily because of quantum computing. Well, apparently, six days after the Fed CBDC fed coin went online, it went offline. The problem started six days after the lunch, after the launch of the digital currency to replace the US dollar. The hacker group calling itself Reserve Raiders infiltrated Fed Coin servers and transferred to itself ten billion dollars. One of the Reserve Raiders said Fed Coin security was equivalent to those spring locks you can open by sliding a credit card between your door. Only a few hours later, the entire Fed Coin infrastructure stopped functioning. Please resist CBDC. Those are the end of my reports.
Okay, I'm glad. Are there any other reports? We'll move on then to the discussion item, which is the resolution establishing limits to state and/or local government emergency measures emanating from the Board of County Commissioners, from the Livingston County Health Department regarding a pandemic. I'm going to ask Commissioner Deaton to open the discussion and give us some of your feelings on this resolution and why you supported it.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm one of the commissioners that worked on this resolution, and what it's not is an attack on a person, attack on an organization, or attack on a department. What it is, is what we continue to do on this board, and that's to reassure the residents of our county that we have their back, and that we will continue to support the constitution. And that's why I worked with some commissioners and some of our constituents on the- on, on the drafting of this. So I, my intention was to get it on, uh, on the agenda, and I appreciate you putting it on here for discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have comments to make on this?
I support it.
Okay, there you go. I see Rich McNulty, are you, can you, can you hear me? Counselor?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, you've had a chance to review this, uh, resolution and, and give it a test of whether it's constitutional or not. What are your feelings on it?
Our feelings are that it, 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 it stays within the jurisdictional and authority of the Board of Commissioners and it advocates both the position of the Board of Commissioners, um, to the legislator to change the existing legislation that does and does not provide limits on the, uh, authority of the health officer. And it advocates, in addition, or the alternative, it advocates for how the board would like to see the health officer react to position or to circumstances in the future. So it, it is with, it would be our opinion that, that this does come within the authority of the Board of Commissioners to advocate these positions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Matt Bowling, I see you're up there too. Would you, would you care to jump in here, please?
Who is that, Commissioner?
Matt Bowling. From the Health Department? Okay. There we go.
Good evening, commissioners.
Share some of your thoughts with us, please.
You know, it's similar to this week. You know, it's the prerogative of the board to, um, provide, you know, some of this language. I, I've talked to Commissioner Deaton in the past. I, I understood he was going to be presenting this at some point, and I, I guess my concerns are, I'm just trying to get, you know, our department back to running our mandated services within the county and, and not keep bringing up the spotlight on COVID. I understand people are, um, still upset about what happened in the past. I guess that'd be my only concern. This has already been brought up at this meeting. It's already, you know, been made public at this point, so, I guess I have no, no other comments at this point.
Anybody else on the board? Commissioner, Commissioner McNulty-Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to comment on the, uh, resolution, at least from a discussion standpoint. The, uh, having been on the board through COVID, uh, and having read through the Public Health Code extensively, not, I'm not a lawyer, but I can read. The statutes vest, uh, tremendous authority, uh, unilateral authority in the county health officer that, uh, is, in my view, uh, more authority that's, that is granted to the Board of Commissioners. And it's unfortunate that, um, you know, uh, decades ago, our legislature, um, thought this was the best way to move forward to, um, address a, a potential pandemic. And, um, but we can see how it's been abused. And so with that knowledge, it is, you know, what, it's important to understand for me to, to delve and I, uh, what would we do differently? You know, uh, because we can see the handwriting on the wall, what the federal government is wanting to do, what the state government is wanting to do. Uh, entities that are, have far more authority and power than a county, uh, one of 83 counties in Michigan. But that's not to say we're not going to do anything. In my view, we need to do everything we can to, um, protect the rights of the citizens of this county. And with that, um, you know, we, uh, we do hold, we, the Board of Commissioners holds one significant, I'll say, uh, bit of authority, and that is we hold the authority to hire and fire the health officer. And it's authority that I, I prefer that we not have to, um, exercise. I, I'm not out to fire anybody. I'm not out to threaten anybody's job, but, um, I, I want to make it clear to the citizens listening in, we, that, that is authority that we have as a Board of Commissioners. So, um, by expressing our desire, our, our point of view in terms of, you know, uh, opposing mandates and, uh, well, everything in the resolution, I, I think we, we send a clear message, you know, what the position of the board is, and, um, you know, it, you know, wh- whether circumstances in the future will rise to, uh, the intensity or, um, that's required to consider discharging, um, a valued employee, I guess the only time will tell. Um, I, I think that it would be a, um, uh, difficult decision. I, but I think when we look at it in the context of what's, what best protects citizens' rights, it's, makes it less, uh, difficult. So, um, I look forward to, um, you know, addressing some of these issues. The, uh, will likely be future resolutions put forward that will, um, help the commissioners, um, you know, analyze data, you know, find out what the facts are, and then, you know, make decisions based on those facts that, uh, are, are more protective of citizens' rights. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let me, uh, let me just jump in here for a second and, and assure our, uh, Health Director, Matt Bowling. The, you know, I, I, I've known you for many years and, and you've, you've given a great service to the citizens of this community and to the department. So, um, and it's not going to come up for a vote while I'm here, but your job is threatened. I hope you didn't get that impression. But here on the board, we tend to speak our minds and, uh, um, good health directors are hard to find. So, anybody else? Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Resolutions, uh, unless they're more than words, uh, don't mean a lot. Um, uh, I have a couple, uh, comparisons here, uh, with our emergency manager, uh, Teresa Cramante. Uh, she and our, uh, chairman have the right to declare, uh, an emergency in Livingston County. And they have that right to declare that emergency for seven days. Uh, after seven days, the board has to take action to continue it. Uh, now, that's talking about when a tornado comes through or when, uh, you know, some natural disaster happens, and those are generally more limited in, in scope. But there does need to be that authority to call for emergency. Uh, I think that, uh, our Health Department, and I've said it before, uh, there are times when the Health Department must act unilaterally for the health of the community. The, uh, the question is, you know, but, you know, uh, I had an uncle that died at three of, of diphtheria. Today, people don't die of diphtheria. Uh, but if we had in our community 10 children die of diphtheria, I think that we would think that the Health Department has some responsibility to act in that regard. There are times when the Health Department has to have the authority. The question, the question is, and I've said it before, it's a matter of trust. Uh, and, uh, in that regard, I do trust Matt Bowling, uh, to not overstep his authority. But I think that it's also, uh, the, the test is not whether we pass this or not. The test is what do we do when somebody steps out of line? Or, or starts, uh, reinstituting the lockdowns and the masking and those sort of things. That is the test. The test is not tonight. What we do with this, uh, resolution. The test is what do we do when our, when our rights are, uh, are starting to be violated? Will this, uh, board stand up at that time? I do believe that we will. But this is not, this is only a test of words. Um, uh, and, and I support it. I think that, I think that, uh, we've, everything in this, I think that the board has made it quite clear that that's the feeling of the board. Um, so whether we pass these words or not, in my mind, that's not the issue, because I think we've said everything here already. We can say it again. I don't mind. I would vote for it, but that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, thank you. Any other commissioners? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, if I may, I'd like to ask, uh, Commissioner Deaton a question.
Go right ahead.
Roger, is this verbatim to the resolution that you drafted several weeks ago? Has there been any changes in the interim?
Yes, there's been changes.
There has been. And I, I assume that's because you had a conversation with Richmond McNulty and/or Matt Bowling?
And others.
Okay. I, I, I'm generally in support of this thing. However, I have some concerns about the 28-day, uh, language and, and some of our constituents have voiced their concerns about that. And, uh, I, uh, I, I guess I'd like to get a written report from our legal folks, uh, with respect to that particular, uh, paragraph of the resolution, so, um, I, I guess I would be in favor of not voting on this this evening, but, uh, looking to get some clarification on some of these points, that we could bring it up, uh, at our next meeting.
Samuel Council is still there? I'll put my glasses on. Mr. McNulty?
Yes, sir.
This, the, the issue with the 28-day, uh, um, program, I mean, can you give us some, some of your legal opinion on whether that holds water or not?
Well, I, I can issue a written legal opinion, or I can tell you right now that, you know, 333-2453 is the provision that allows the health officer to provide, uh, to provide emergency orders, uh, in the, in the event of an epidemic. At the time the COVID passed, or the COVID came along, there were very few restrictions on that. Since that time, and since COVID has come into pass, the legislature has placed restrictions limiting the certain actions of the health officer after 30 days. What your resolution is basically doing is asking, excuse me, uh, limiting the authority of the health officer to, uh, do certain types of actions. For example, to prohibit or limit visitation, um, in hospitals. Um, but then it is vested back with the, uh, with the legislature and/or the governor. It doesn't go to the Board of Commissioners, like, uh, one of the commissioners mentioned, the, uh, emergency management orders due from the, the county emergency manager. So what you're doing is advocating a consistent res- or a resolution to, to the legislature to make a provision which would further limit the authority of the, uh, of the, um, health officer and to grant the authority to the Board of Commissioners. It's-
Well, the, uh, Board of Commissioners, of course, are elected. They, they respond to the people's wishes, I think, directly as opposed to the health officer. And that doesn't mean that the health officer is not aware of what the public, uh, has to deal with. But I think that we've had-
That, that's correct, but as Commissioner Nakagiri pointed out, there's just the way that this was set up by the legislature, and he accurately said it, certain authority was given to, uh, the health officer, um, the way this was set up. And what you're doing is advocating that in the future, that the legislature changed that.
Are we doing anything illegal if we pass a resolution like this?
Not one advocating, no.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, yes, sir.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was reviewing MCL 333.2453, and I see where it gives the authority to the health officer. I was wondering, though, in this resolution, if we did in fact change, for example, the word in, remove in strongly recommends and insert in directs that. Even though that conflicts with the MCL, what's the ramifications on our, on our end?
Well, uh, I can issue this by written legal opinion, or I can give it to you now, but in the past, our opinion is-
Now it works. Now it works.
All right. In the past, our opinion has been, to the extent that you advocate and, or you set up a procedure that violates state law with respect to the health code, uh, the, the ramifications are losing funding and/or the state Health Department taking over the Health Department, or aspects of the Health Department and running it directly.
Is there, uh, MCL that dictates where the state could take over the Health Department?
Yes, and I can provide that to you. I don't have that right at my fingertips, but I've provided opinions on that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We all know somebody who has, uh, denied treatment shots, for instance, vaccinations and so forth, and it has been costly. We've lost a lot of people in the military because they, they refuse to, uh, be vaccinated. A lot of people have lost their jobs because they refused to be vaccinated. So, I'm at, there's a quandary here, is how could you possibly solve this problem without everybody getting harmed? And, um, and we haven't had that answer come up here yet. Mr. McNulty, other than try to go head-to-head with the State Health Department? Are you with me?
Yeah, I, I'm with you. I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not understanding. I don't disagree with you, but during COVID, there were a lot of tests that were proffered regarding the limitations on the health officer's authority. And pretty uniformly, the health officer's authority was upheld. So what you're doing is you're advocating a statutory change to address that.
And as I understand your position on that, we would not be violating any state statutes if we were to approve this, uh, resolution?
Again, what you're doing is you're advocating a change, so no, you're, you, you can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, do you want to say anything else?
No, I mean, this discussion puts me in a tough position. Um, I, I, you know, I don't understand what the, the will of the board and, uh, the will of folks that, uh, spoke to the public tonight. Um, I understand this community. Uh, as Commissioner Helsford mentioned, you know, it had to be pretty, uh, an extreme circumstance, uh, locally anyway, for us to, to do anything outside the scope of what's presented here, so, um, I guess it's the pleasure of the board and how they want to move forward with this, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Anybody have any questions for our Health Director? It may be appropriate now to take a consensus at the board. If this were a resolution that we were asked to vote on this evening, what would your feelings on it be? I'm going to start at the other end.
I'd say I'm favorable, but I, I just don't know whether, you know, uh, whether we can vote on it tonight, or what we have to do to elevate it to voting.
No, I'm asking for consensus, really. We'll, we'll deal with whether we can vote it in- We'll, we'll deal with whether we can vote it at any time.
Yeah, I, I would vote in favor of it.
Commissioner?
Absolutely, since I helped draft it and worked with legal and our past administrator and many of the other commissioners on this, I would absolutely love to see it passed.
Commissioner?
I support it.
Commissioner?
Yes, yes, yes.
Did you get three votes?
No, but you got it.
I'm just taking three.
Just take... Commissioner?
I'm in support of it.
Commissioner? Commissioner?
Yes, 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 and yes.
I support this resolution as well. We can send this back to committee or we can reopen the agenda and place this resolution on the agenda, place this resolution on the agenda. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a, a vote to reopen the agenda. And will that take two-thirds vote, Councillor?
Yes, it will by board rule.
Thank you. We only have eight people here, so how many would we, how many would be necessary to?
Six.
Six. Still six? All right.
Yes.
I move...
Go ahead.
You, the Florida Commissioner Nakagiri.
I was going to move to reopen the agenda and placing this resolution up for a vote tonight.
Second sample.
All right. Been moved and supported that we reopen the agenda and place this resolution on the agenda for a vote. All those in...
I'd ask the attorney whether we're violating any Open Meetings Act or Notice Act because it was a revised agenda that found us tonight with a discussion item. So my sense is that very few people would have even contemplated that we might vote. And it might be better for us to just put it on the next regular board meeting. But that would be an attorney opinion.
It wouldn't be the chairman's opinion because I, Councillor, what, what is your opinion?
The answer is, to the first issue, it's not an Open Meetings Act violation. And the second issue regarding whether or not there, you know, there, you would prefer there be notice, that's a public policy issue that's up for the board to decide.
Okay, I take that to mean the board could reopen the agenda, place this resolution on the agenda, and then move forward legally.
Correct. Yes.
So I'm going to ask for a vote to, to do just that.
Mr. Chair, I hate to interrupt, but can I please seek clarification? Commissioner Nakagiri, could we add that because of the numbering system? Could it please be added, if it is added, as Resolution 2023-09-163?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So Madam Clerk or, Jackie, where are we now with...
We have a motion on the floor. Excuse me, I need to turn on my microphone.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Nakagiri. He motioned to reopen the agenda to add this resolution as mentioned 2023-09-163, seconded by Commissioner Sample.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
I, I think that this is not new ground. So that we're doing nothing that is unexpected of this commission. Therefore, I think that we can add it to the agenda tonight and dispatch it. I don't see this as a big difference, you know, first.
I see. I understand. Thank you.
I think we're restating basically what we've said before. So acting upon it tonight would be fine.
Are there any other comments or questions? And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We're back. This is a proven agenda item. It's... Yes, sir. Thank you, people. Then I'll turn the meeting over to our Vice Chairman to dispatch the resolutions for consideration. Commissioner Drick.
Let me make a note here.
Take all the time you need.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're on Agenda Item 12, Resolutions for Consideration. 12A reads 2023-09-158. It's a resolution to retain the non-union employees, elected officials, commissioners, and judges' benefit plans for 2024 fiscal year. Can I get a motion?
Vow of Helsnerman. Support Deaton.
Moved by Helsnerman, support by Deaton. Jennifer Palm Bush, if you would proceed with your presentation.
I will. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. So this is a resolution for status quo open enrollment benefits for our employees for 2024. Status quo, however, there's an exception of two cost-saving measures that we're recommending and is, would be put forth in this resolution. First would be to increase the stop-loss deductible with our Blue Cross benefits from $175,000 per year to $200,000. The county is self-insured for our medical benefits. And so this purchase of stop-loss insurance would, is expected to save about $155,000 per year. The second recommendation is to institute as a pilot program, a Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Levango program. And that is to assist and support our employees who are prediabetic and diabetic, to assist them in managing their conditions better and to ultimately cost less to the plan. Estimated savings to the plan is $28,000. And finally, PA 152, Public Act 152 of 2011, places a cap on the amount of money that public employers can spend on healthcare. And as a self-insured entity, our council has recommended since 2012 that we opt out of those caps, but still measure our compliance with those. And so there's two cap measurements. There's the hard cap, which is a set amount fixed by the legislature, as well as an 80/20 cap, meaning that the employer's paying no more than 80% of the cost of the health benefits. And on, in that, the packet, there's an analysis done by our broker and showing that we're actually compliant with both measures, with both the hard cap and the 80/20 cap. And so with that, looking for your support on this resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Questions, analysis, comment?
I have a question. How much money would we save, if any, by going along with the 80/20 in the statute or the hard cap in the statute?
So I don't believe there would be any savings. We are effectively doing better than those. Our, our current benefits are actually doing better. And you can see from the analysis in the packet that by, we're, we're saving actually 20,000 more if you use the 80%, 20% measure and 1.7 million more. So our plan is doing better than those hard caps set by statute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Any discussion, comment, analysis? I'll close discussion. We'll go to voice vote. All those in favor of 158 kindly say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's nine to zero passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Oh, we'll go with eight zero.
Eight, yeah.
Item B is numbered 2023-9-159. It's a resolution authorizing the County Treasurer to establish the County Parks Donation Fund Number 209. May I get a motion?
Motion to move, Deaton. Support Gross.
Moved by Deaton, supported by Commissioner Gross. Treasurer Nash, are you on the Zoom and can you proceed? Muffled and we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Terrific. Thank you.
Yes. Um, we went through this pretty extensively at committee. So I, I welcome any questions. The resolution before you would create a special revenue fund strictly for the purpose of receiving donation funds for the maintenance and improvement of the county-owned parks. Uh, it's been, it's been run through legal and also the auditors as well. So I welcome any questions.
Any questions, any comment, any analysis? Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, Chair. This is one that I had worked as well. And I wanted to thank, you know, Livingston County staff and Treasurer Nash who are working with legal and, and to put this through. And the reason I'm just commenting on it, there might be a lot of folks online that don't know that we have other accounts set up like this for veteran services. And I believe we also have one for the animal shelter as well. So there's a lot of good things out there if you want to look for them. Thank you.
Any further comment, question, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and we'll go to a roll call vote kindly.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dreck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to Item 12C. It's number 2023-09-160. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency to support Livingston County Veteran Services to enhance and improve operations for fiscal year 2024. May I get a motion?
Motion, please.
I hearing, I'm hearing Commissioner Domas moved. Is there a second?
Support Gross.
Thank you. Support by Commissioner Gross. Director Baca?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Hey, gentlemen, you guys are fully aware of the annual MBAA grant that's authorized, if awarded, back in April. Came to the full board to ask for, or to request to apply. We did, and we were granted the amount of $144,046. And so hence, this is now asking you to accept it so that it can help aid us and fund our programs. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions, comment, analysis? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and we'll go to a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
And Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Round to 12 sub D. It's number 2023-09-161. It's a resolution authorizing the request for funding and execution of the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to conduct environmental health services. Can I get a motion?
So move, Helsnerman. Support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helsnerman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Director Bowlang, if you can hear me, you may proceed and explain if you will.
I can hear you and I will move forward. This is reoccurring funding from the state of Michigan to provide environmental health services, partially funds our response in those areas. Contract is roughly $400,000. Line share, that is, in our non-commune public water supply program, which is good to see an increase there. So due to timing, I'm asking for a request and an execution of a contract for Eagle. There's, you know, pending legal review. There, there's nothing new here. It's more or less the same contract as last year. So answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, analysis, comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and we'll go to roll call vote.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to 12E. It's number 2023-09-162. It's a resolution to apply for the CDC Public Health Infrastructure Grant Program through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
So move, Nakagiri. Support Helsnerman.
Motion by Nakagiri, support by Helsnerman. Matt, you're up again.
Commissioner, so this is a resolution just to apply for the funding to express interest to the state of Michigan, their fiduciary through the CDC Public Health Infrastructure Grant Program. This is very flexible funding that, you know, I'm hoping would allow us to do kind of a major remodel within the department for some old office furniture and such, painting and carpeting and all that. There's, it's a, it sunsets in 2027. We're, you know, should it be approved? We submit a budget each year for what we intend to, to fund with that grant. It's about a little over $700,000 in total. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Nakagiri?
I have a question for our acting county administrator. The, if this resolution is approved, would there be, have to be further resolutions to, I'll say, appropriate the money? Would the board have to? Or if we approve this resolution, are we saying that the health department can do anything they want with the money?
So for the current year, I believe that the bottom of the resolution at hand, it says any budget amendments is required? Is that, is that accurate? If it does, okay, if it does not state that, then they have to come back to the board for a budget. So for a budget amendment and for the board to approve the appropriation.
Yeah, the, the only therefore be it resolved, it says therefore be it resolved, that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the application submission and the amount of $704,000 to the Department of Health and Human Services to participate in the Public Health Infrastructure Grant funding opportunity covering the period of October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2027. So it, it sounds like they would have to come back to the board to be appropriated.
It was. I don't know if that was the intent of Matt Bowling or not, but it does not have the typical language that we have that says any budget amendments needed. And then, of course, in the future, it would also have to be authorized by the board as well. So yes, to answer your question, he would have to come back to the board for an appropriation to that grant.
Yeah, this resolution was simply to apply for the funding and express interest in funding. I'd have to come back for the board to accept any funding. At that point, we can put more detail in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Any further question, comment, or analysis? Director Bowlang, the amount in this SIP portfolio says that the study was done in 2023 and the project is scheduled for 2024. How much leeway does the state give for increased inflationary costs?
With this funding, I don't, I don't think it's a consideration with this funding. It's kind of money that fell in the state's lap. It got appropriated equally through all the health departments in the state of Michigan. So I don't, I don't think there's any, any mechanism for that.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I have. Commissioner Helsner? Excuse me, Deaton. Commissioner Deaton?
Yeah, just to help some of the folks out that might, may not have seen or read... Yeah, yeah, just, uh, to, to help some of the folks out that might may not have seen or read this one. Um, the state's, you know, broken up into 44 local health departments. And, uh, you know, the state has decided to take more of our tax dollars and break it up between these 44 health departments. And, um, you know, our director is only doing, you know, his job and applying for these funds and making sure we get a piece of the pie as well and bring some of it back. So that's my, my simple take on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment, question? Analysis. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. We'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's eight to zero passage. Now, we go to item 12F that will be in numbered 2023-09-163. And that's a resolution establishing limitations to state and or local government emergency measures emanating from the Livingston County Health Department regarding a pandemic. Can I get a motion?
Motion Deaton.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Any discussion, question, analysis, pontification, any further words? Seeing none, we'll move to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing an eight to zero unanimous, uh, passage. Now it's, uh, item number 13. It's entitled Accounts Payable Reports. There's 13 sub A. Claims dated September 11, 2023. And sub B, entitled Payables, dated August 19 through August 31, 2023. Can I get a motion?
So move to pay the bills and claims.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Commissioner Gross. Is there a second?
Support Helserman.
Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Helserman. Voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's eight to zero unanimous for 13A and B. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. At this point of the evening, this is a two-minute maximum call to the public. And if there are cards that have been turned in, our clerk will tell people who's up and who's up next, and we'll proceed through the cards and then we'll go to Zoom.
Ben Tasic from Howell, followed by Chuck Wright.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ben Tasic. I live in Genoa Township. I'm here on behalf of, um, transportation. I, I concur with the previous callers, uh, and, and, uh, Randy, uh, regarding, uh, the need to expand public transportation. Couple of weeks ago, I, I think you had an opportunity to listen to Eric Casey, who is a senior citizen with special needs that lives in a nursing home. And I think he shared with you the difficulty of getting a bus over on the weekends because, uh, LETS has a limited bus service on weekends. On Sundays, uh, when people want to go to church and other religious or non-religious, uh, events, uh, it's very difficult to get a bus because LETS has one bus running um, one week and then the following week they have two buses running, then they go back to one bus. So they have two buses bimonthly, I guess you could say, far less than, I mean, uh, a, a, a greater need i- is out there than what the service is being provided. I know the budget for this year has been used up for transportation. I assume it has been used up. But we have been working since, uh, I would say February of this year to try to get two buses on Sunday. Just a small request, two buses instead of one, because the need is great. And I, I, I guess we have what, September, October, November, December, when the year is up? And, and maybe we cannot get another bus to have two buses on Sunday, which would help greatly. And, and I don't think we're asking for much. And as I look at the, um, the master Livingston County Transit Master Plan that was put together, the action page, uh, all of you are familiar with the action page. And, and it lists areas they will be working on over one or two-year period, things that will be working on from three to five years and things on a long-term basis. And when we look at expanded weekend service, that was to start the first and second year of that plan. And I think that plan was put together, if I'm not mistaken, in 219. The master Livingston County Transit Master Plan came out in 219. Uh, I, I realize that during COVID, we all had certain limitations in terms of the services that we could provide. But now, since we are past COVID and listening to some of the comments this evening, uh, most people feel comfortable that we are beyond any emergency needs for right now. So we do have emergency needs for some additional bus service on a weekend. And I don't want to belabor the point. It's been a long evening and Monday Night Football starts, I think, in about 15 minutes. So I want to make sure I shut up. And I really want to thank you for all you do, uh, regarding public transportation. And if it wasn't for LETS that has been servicing this county, I don't know what people would do for public transportation. And I think credit needs to go to you guys. You sometimes don't get enough credit for what you do do. Thank you so much.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township. And that's the last card I have.
The health director commented earlier and said that we were rehashing the COVID past. Maybe he's unaware of, uh, the state of the economy. And that CNN has actually said that the, um, Democrat president-elect is only a 39% approval. We are coming into an election season, believe it or not. Maybe we are rehashing COVID. We just don't know it. And it's going to be coming along soon. Fairly recommends, oh, I'm sorry, strongly recommends. I don't know what the, uh, rules or laws are for tax code for paying property tax in the county. But I encourage you, gentlemen, to change the wording to whatever it is to strongly recommends, because I'd like to be strongly recommended to pay my taxes. I'm sure that's not the wording, but I certainly look forward to that resolution next, uh, two weeks.
No. And I don't see any hands on the Zoom.
No, Commissioner, we do not have any.
Zero on Zoom. I'll close call to the public. We'll go on to item number 15, adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So move. Support Helserman.
Motion by Domas, support by Helserman. All those in favor, voice vote, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero passes. We are adjourned.